Are you reading this one?
The town can't buy them through Wal-moss.
They're gonna pay the expensive price.
Frontage here, frontage here, and a thin piece here. This little block and this block are out. So it's a very odd shape of parcel.
This is what I'm gonna be talking about, Nor Lane, right up to Center Street.
What's the farm parcel line now? Is this gonna be a building lot?
Yes.
You know, you're missing the setbacks?
Yeah, just a couple of months ago, they were asking about building. Yeah, there was someone.
When's that gotta be done by?
As I was saying.
Uh, well, two hours from now.
So, next meeting?
Or is that running?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Yeah, 'cause you're missing that.
Top top ten feet.
Engine access. No, it's on the building up. Yeah, it's the setbacks in my three oh three five on the back part.
Twenty feet, yeah.
I see it meets it, but you wanna sketch mine?
Uh, no.
So you could live, you know, two.
Stand that by and just do. Okay, ready? Motion open the meeting?
Okay, okay, motion open the meeting at seven forty-five P.M.
Should I get in?
All in favor?
Aye.
So the meeting will open September first, twenty fifteen, Build and Planting Board meeting. Thank you all for coming and watching at home. First step here, we have a sketch of an A and R off of Seven Star Road, was that, for the state of Patraska? Is that correct?
Right, Center, Center Street and Seven Star Road.
What's, what's, what's the address? Do they have a number at all, or just?
It's all vacant land, so it does not have an address as of yet.
Now, it's possibly the fifteen point two four acres you're doing a lot of line change.
Uh, it's subdividing a large parcel into two lots, parcel A and parcel B. They each have frontage and access on the roadways where they border. Within the builder's circle. Both have the area.
So it's just one house you're gonna build? These are the existing houses that are gonna stay?
Correct, they're not part of the parcel.
Okay.
So, yeah, parcel A would be a A and R lot, and then parcel B will need to come into the definitive subdivision. Because we don't have access off of Seven Star Road. And so we'll be having a definitive subdivision.
Now, the access off of Seven Star, that's right on a, right on a knoll?
Right here.
Oh, up here, okay. So it's more flat, and you don't have that blind spot there, okay.
So who's, who's gonna be coming in with the subdivision? Coming in with that?
As long as we're divulged.
Okay.
Yeah.
On, on parcel A, we're just missing the setbacks. I noticed. Parcel B, this dividing line here, is this the wire fence line? Is this the, the wetlands part?
Uh, correct, that's the wetlands.
Wetlands, okay, thank you. So, and so where's the access off of, uh, for parcel B?
Well, right now, the, the access and frontage is shown on Center Street.
Now, with the access road here, it's gonna be servicing this, not new.
That access road's gonna have a driveway.
Oh, this is what it is.
Oh, it's only gonna be one?
The one house.
On this whole thing? On parcel B?
Where, where is the driveway gonna be for this house?
Can't get it off of Nor?
It's a private way with.
It's a bad area. It's a blind spot, isn't it?
No, no, not Seven Star, that's straight there.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, because Seven, Center Street's what you have.
Alright.
It's gonna go back.
Well, the house will be on this knoll here.
Right, right where I thought it was, yeah.
Right.
It can barrel ass and over the hill and down.
Okay, yeah, you got a couple of things to sketch around. Okay. So when would you like to come in with this, with the corrections on it?
Right away, uh, so we can get it signed on the fifteenth.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, how come? You could almost subdivide this one too, and make a driveway off of Center Street, right?
If we had access to it.
Oh, you don't have access to Center Street?
He's just, uh, proposed A and R, okay. No acting tonight, just, uh... Informing the board.
Okay, so he's gonna be, he's gonna be back on?
On the fifteenth.
Setbacks to?
Setbacks, and then, uh, yeah, and then on parcel B, if you wanna put the CBA circle over on where the house is going?
No, parcel B is not gonna be a house.
That's on the next, well, yeah, there will be, but.
There will be, but there'll be more than one. No, there'll only be one house.
On B?
Yeah, we're gonna be coming in with a definitive subdivision waiving the roadway. Because we'll be deriving our access from.
Who's the trustee?
Uh, Dapsis, the daughter.
The daughter?
No, she did pass away on June.
Okay.
And it says the CBA attorney there.
Okay.
Are you working directly for her?
Yes.
Moving home?
Nice family for Patraska, they've done a lot farming community over the years, so. Couldn't bring that in on one, um...
Can we keep one?
You can, yeah, I'll take whatever you don't want.
Yeah, can I hang on to this one too?
He's gonna have nothing.
Well, it's getting ready to anyway. So, uh, okay, alright, so that ends that one over here. Craft check is mixed up. Mr. Craft check, how are you?
Did you bring in what I gave you, Jim?
We're doing the, uh...
I have already craft checked, three pages I gave you earlier.
You got it.
No, you didn't, you didn't give it back to me. Believe it or not. No, I do have it, okay.
Do you have any more of these?
Yes.
This one's just for the surety?
Uh, this is, we expect to believe to be the, uh...
Oh, land disturbance.
Finally goes land disturbance proof.
These are the bullet points that he was gonna address, we had already approved everything, but.
Do you wanna just run through this, because what was corrected?
Here is, um, a copy of the plan that accompanied the latest submitted from last week or so. What we're asking for, I think, is just housekeeping. The, uh, the applicant's consultant came a long way to addressing all the comments, and we only see about three minor items. One being a proposed septic system area on Lot Two. They show it on Lot Three, but they do not show it on Lot Two, um, so we're asking that the system area be shown along with instructions to the contractor to protect that slope, because it looks like both of them will be mounted systems. So we wanted to protect that slope, especially where there's a lot of drainage inlets in and around where those slopes will be constructed, so we wanna protect cetacean from entering the system. Modifying some erosion protection details around catch basins. And, um, I think there's one other requested condition. Yeah, we've noticed some inconsistencies in the stormwater prevention plan that was prepared and provided. So that's just housekeeping, and then, um, adjust the schedule that was provided. They have approximately a fifteen-week proposed construction schedule, which is starting now, during this to December, which is a pretty aggressive schedule, so prior to commencement, I think we should look at that again and either have consultants work with the planning board or the road commissioner directly as to an appropriate schedule, because if they go hog wild, they're gonna end up with a lot of exposed sloped soils that will need to be protected and stabilized.
And no frost lumps, they're gonna be buried in any trench work or anything, so. If you dig, and then you try to backfill, and it's too cold and it's frost, you know, we're not gonna allow that. And once we excavate the roadway in, and wherever we're gonna be stripping, we need to see what the soil is underneath, whether or not the water table's high and pumping, or whether we need sub drains. But we'll know when we start excavating, but if the weather turns on us quick, that's when the work's gonna start.
Oh, thank you. So this is the schedule that was provided, and as you can see, it starts this week or next. You know, that's beginning of September, if you go out fifteen weeks, you're, you know, past Thanksgiving for sure. And we can't tell with the weather how long the asphalt plans are gonna stay open this season, so... It's just a tricky time to start a subdivision, so we're asking that they phase the work as they can, present a schedule that's more realistic, and, um, you know, work with the board.
Right, he's got place roadway gravels and fine grade, he's well in, almost into December, yeah. That's a bad time to be spreading gravel, and I've seen it snow on a Thanksgiving day, I've been called out.
Okay, so...
I keep getting held up for a while, I mean, you guys, the guys pushing me back through this, and then you keep pushing me forward.
Binder is way past, it's into January, it looks like.
Who's doing the work, Carl?
Gibbs.
Jim.
Jimmy Gibbs.
So Gibbs, you gonna get this done quicker?
Yeah, you?
No, it's possible, they've got about a three-week window there for drainage, so if they have a good crew or two, you know, they could probably get through it. But it's a pretty aggressive schedule, uh, it's no question, so, um, I think it's fine for the purposes of submitting something to review, but I do think it needs a little work, and, and maybe they stop short of doing some things. Make sure they get the drainage in, and then stabilize it, and then, um, you know, put binder down where they have to, and... Make sure that there's no work done, or minimal work done on the lots themselves.
What's, um, Carl, what's, what's your plan, your schedule plan?
I, I don't see anything getting done on the lots. The roadway.
Right, and that's the most crucial, is the roadway.
That, 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 that's what's going on, the roadway. As of now, there's no design for either lots.
Okay.
In other words, so that isn't gonna happen overnight.
Okay, so...
So house lots are kinda out of it, it looks like, till spring anyways.
So what do you wanna do, um, on this schedule?
No, that's the weeks. I was hoping to get started at fifteen minutes. He's got some time, he's gonna, he's gonna...
Well, that won't be a problem, it's, it's, where's your, where's your end, end game before the snow flies?
Beginning of December.
No, I mean, on there.
Yeah, given, given that start time, it's...
Which milestone? Stop short of?
Oh, he, he has a fifteen-week schedule starting September fifteenth, that will run through the first week.
So if we go ten weeks, we stop at?
Yeah, rough grading roadway.
You'd be finishing up with.
Utility placements.
Drainage utilities and rough grading roadway.
Okay, so Bob, what's, how far you want that to go before the snow?
I would say November.
No, I mean, what milestone?
Oh. And what if it was quicker?
That's what I mean, they can be quicker, you're in.
We, we won't be able to say till we see what's on the...
See what the weather is at that time.
He's right, Bob's right, you gotta open it up, look at that, when they book this, that work it open.
So, I'm just trying to say, target milestone, drainage, sub drains, base gr, whatever it is, if it's not snowing yet, you can keep going. But shoot for something, and that way you can get moving.
Well, let me just ask you this. If you can't get binder, that ends it anyway, right? In other words, so does binder usually dictate how the weather goes? I mean, they don't keep pumping it out if you can't put it down, right?
Right, the first snow, they shut the plants down.
Usually right in the middle of November, usually.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just, you know, I mean...
And we don't let them hot top in town if it isn't at least fifty degrees. So sometimes they have to wait till the afternoon to even put some hot top down. If the plants still over, we won't know until we get it excavated, look at the sub drainage, if we require sub drains or not, and...
At that point, if you can't pay, you could put some recycled material down or something, just to kind of lock it in.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to give Carl some guidance here, you know, if you got a fifteen-week schedule, if things go ahead of schedule, how far do you want him to go? If he can chop two weeks off that, where do you wanna stop?
The other side, we don't want you redoing it, you know what I mean, your expenses go up, and you know, come spring, and that's, that's...
You wanna retune that? How, how do you wanna approach that?
Yeah, I'm sure we can retune this.
Yeah, we're suggesting that that just get revised, and you can work with the powers that be here.
He's, he's set to go, as far as I know, with the other stuff, right, Bob? So you can get started, and then just, I mean, with that adjusted schedule, see if Gibbs can move up the timeline, he said the fifteenth? Yeah, see if he can get started sooner, and then, Bob, you're gonna be there, so.
Yeah, because you could put your erosion controls in tomorrow.
You need to vote to assign those.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as, because Bob or Bob will need to, you know, review it.
Okay, so before us, we get the, uh...
That road preparedness.
Uh, review the land disturbance permit, so the land disturbance permit has to be voted on and endorsed. Do we have a motion to approve as this?
So, Martin. With those, with those three conditions, the schedule modification.
Schedule mod.
Of phasing the work when they can.
Right.
The details for erosion controls at the catch basins, we have a different detail for adjusting catch basins versus ones to be constructed, and, um...
So that's how?
Then the other, yeah, and the other is just to modify this plan to show erosion controls of the base of the mounted system slopes.
Okay.
With those three modifications.
Yeah.
That's what we're asking.
Alright, who's flying that motion?
How, how come you guys approved me?
I'll fly it, yeah.
Last month, and now I'm doing this again. I, 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 I love to feel...
It's two separate permits.
Two separate permits, this is good.
Two separate permits, Carl.
This is a land disturbance permit. We've got the subdivision approval.
I mean, it goes on and on and on.
Well, normally they would be wrapped together, but, because we waited so long, you know...
Carl, we're just voting to approve it now.
These comments were up since December, so...
So, we got a, do we have a second on that motion?
Okay, we got a, what, a motion to approve?
With the modification.
Yeah, the three corrections and housekeeping answers.
This is the original, if you don't want to endorse, that's it.
So, which modifications do I have to add in there?
It's conditions one, two, three.
What's that?
There are modifications, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second. Second, and, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Show the voting handles. Show the, uh...
You're gonna start signature on those, right, and pass it down?
That's a copy.
Yeah, who's got the original? We need one copy signed anyway.
That's the original.
Well, let me start it, okay.
Right.
Tell them what happened, that's all.
Yeah.
Notify your office that, uh, Jim, for you, is the new chairman, we voted last month.
Well, we invited... I wasn't invited to the coronation, you know?
It was none, but we had put a queen's sword.
We don't have a budget for that.
So he wasn't here, so that's how we get voted here?
No, he wasn't here. It's, it's, this selectman over the years has said, you know, get a new chairman, you know, rotate a little bit, you know, so we rotated.
We rotated, it was twenty years, but it was a rotation.
I hope they're happy.
There you go, two decades.
And I don't think I'm gonna last twenty years, so I'm, I'm... What's this one? This is it.
One's a copy.
Yeah.
One's a copy for us.
Tells you, man, it's...
Yes. Hope so, everybody signed.
Do I have to have black?
That's better to use white.
And that's, that's the original.
Well, this is the original.
You want a pen?
Yeah.
You've been here so long, you ought to be applying for a position on the board.
Things fall punching in.
Alright, that's our call.
Those benefits, yeah. Overtime. You'll find a lot of overtime, you won't get...
Oh, yeah, you'll do that.
I can.
No, you don't get rich in this one.
I gotta bring the form in, I can't even...
Yeah, that should be timestamped, Wally's gonna bring that original timestamped, yeah.
Oh, you have time saved tonight, or you gonna do, you gonna do it all on fifteen? Okay. Okay, got it. Okay, you have the form in? Okay, so, alright, if you can do it.
I stole this from the Commonwealth.
Go to me.
Just need the changes on the next plan, you gonna bring in another set of plans with the changes on it?
Just have, just send it to me. There's no other reviews, you're done.
You know what you're doing, you, you get your approved permit, he's just, he's gonna tune up the cartoon, get it over to him. Okay, and you're gonna work with Gibbs and get that scheduled, and you're cleared to go. If he can start tomorrow, you're good.
Yeah, shorten up the schedule.
Alright, be good.
Alright, we'll, we'll come see you, okay?
Alright, so Skip Sheen Way was on, but that's been pushed off to the next week.
Okay, uh, before you go, Alan, this, this is Chastidens, I got the check twelve fifty.
Okay.
And that needs to be voted while he's here, so they can start for the memorandum of decision for Chastidens.
Oh, you mean a vote to go to, uh... Site plan?
Chastidens already okay, that they already gave me the check for the town.
Oh, to prepare the decision. Permits, special permit, okay. Okay, motion to endorse this?
So, motion.
Okay, motion to endorse what?
The site plan review services for the writing of the special permit.
We prepared that under the previous reign, so...
I'll just put a V in front of it, because they, they didn't throw me too far. Yeah. Did somebody motion that?
Motion to endorse site plan review.
Special permit.
Special permit.
Bob, I can't, I'm ciphered.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And if Mr. Chairman has that language.
Yeah, let's pause a minute, cause I'll pause, see if we can find it.
You can, you can just email it to me.
Which language?
Chad, earlier about, um, some clauses to add to the second...
Four forty-one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that would be that decision.
Chairperson, you have to take notes and be secretary at the same time?
It's, it's a good job, and it's all for the same amount, three hundred bucks a year. Wow, who wants the job, see, I said money, he's...
Popped right up on that one.
Who will we bring in the A and R check for that, uh, when you come back?
Yeah, we, it's one lot, but we're doing it for two, so we set this up as a...
Made up through a town, I go.
Certainly an adventure. Never a dull moment.
It's not like we didn't have a bunch of crack on this one, remember?
The pen on you, while we're standing? Looks like I still got this one. Just took her on the draw. Well, this was, this was accurate by the date anyway.
That's right, that's what I said, we prepared it under your arrangement. So I'm not sure if this is, if this is meaningful, alright, is it the date sign?
Put the V in there.
You made a motion, I'm...
I'm gonna have to bring it to you, because it's not on this package.
Yeah, you can just email it to me, fax it.
Let me take a look at one more thing. Uh, this, this was a big one, wasn't it?
Teresa Brothers, can I calm down? I haven't heard from her since.
Oh, I don't know.
I'm gonna have to bring it over to you.
That's fine, no worries.
Okay, alright, sorry. But it's, um, I think it needs a little language in there, that's all, you know, just to ensure that we don't go broke, okay?
Thank you.
One more thing I need you, Jim, to sign this bill to pay GZA for four forty-one Main Street, four thousand two hundred and twelve.
I'm gonna sign it.
Just authorize them to cut the check. It's out of the engineer account.
Okay, how much is it, Paul?
Right there, four thousand...
Two two two.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna have to file, I've been doing motion.
So, motion to pay the engineer for four forty-one Main Street.
Four thousand two two two. And that's for GZA, right?
Yes, yeah.
Motion, I'll make the motion, need a second.
Second, yeah, okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anywhere?
Anywhere, yeah.
Oh, boy.
What, what's next on agenda?
Uh, here we drive.
I mean, uh...
Want to step to the mic?
I thought they didn't, they canceled.
Skip Sheen canceled.
No, uh...
We don't know where the other parties are, but we'll just talk.
Yeah.
So, since we were here last time...
You sticking around, or?
I thought they canceled.
Well, George wasn't coming in until the fifteenth, that was what he, but you just need to step off for a minute, that's all.
Oh, yeah, we can come back the fifteenth, too.
Well, that's not a problem, but we'd like to hear it anyway, since you're here.
Yeah, okay.
So...
Uh, hold on a second, it was on, uh, would Bob leave for a second? What happened is, uh, George called me today, and they wanna come in on the fifteenth with a bond reduction, so...
What does that mean?
That was for the roadway that was done, the hot topping, we have a bond put in place until it's finished.
Right.
And every aspect of the water line, the sewer line, the gravel, the... And every aspect of the water line, the sewer line, the gravel, the asphalt, you can reduce that bond as the work's been done. And he's coming in with a proposal to have that released for that amount of money. Just that. Now, if you or any other neighbor has problems with him, that isn't related to the roadway, you know, some of that might be civil suit or something, but what's your grievance now?
Our problem is the same problem we've been having since we've been coming months ago.
Since May.
They haven't done anything to try to correct the situation with the landscaping or, um, other issues we've had, but last meeting, they were told to have a meeting with us and try to get something figured out on correcting, you know, the loom not being brought in, the boulders all over the yard, um, the yard is all clay, there's no loom, there's, nothing was done correctly, and they don't even contact us, they don't respond to us, they haven't made any attempt to do anything since the last meeting.
It's almost fall now, and, um...
I mean, it's just ridiculous.
We actually contacted a separate company to see what needed to be done, and they said that the yard, it needs to be aerated, and then it would need to be loomed and seeded, and to do that, you know, we have a price for that, and Greenscape can either pay them to do that, or they can do it themselves the right way. And I think at this point, it may need to be hydroseeded, because now fall's coming, and our warranty's up in December. So, obviously, in December, we're not gonna be seeding, but once December comes, um, obviously, next season, they're not gonna be talking to us.
All right, uh, could you give us a, uh, estimate from that company for aerating and what they suggested, that we can have on file? And, uh, the cost of that, what we can do is we make sure we retain enough money in the bond to cover that in case there is a civil suit going on, and then the decree is that, yes, you get that done, the money will be there to pay it. But hopefully, that can be worked out between you two. So, I advise coming in on the fifteenth, when he's here, and also have that paperwork, but we'd like it on file.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I mean, we, we've been trying to work with them, we've been working with them since May on this, and we're told, you know, every meeting, every single meeting that we'd come to, we were told to our face, you know, don't worry, we're gonna take care of it, we're gonna fix the yard, you're gonna, we're gonna fix everything, and nothing's been done, they're just kinda running us around in circles now.
They've gone to other houses in the neighborhood, and instead of coming to our house afterwards, they'll all stand out in front of our house and talk for, you know, a half hour, knowing that we're there, and we can, you know, try to resolve it, and then they just leave, instead of trying to even make any effort to talk to us.
George met with, um, our neighbor across the street last week, actually, I think you were there.
I pulled up late when they were all leaving, and I, I heard about it.
Yep, and he was, and he was in front of my house, and, um, I opened up my...
I didn't realize that he was supposed to see you that day.
Yeah, I opened up my front door, and I didn't wanna go out there, because they were all talking amongst themselves, so I opened up my front door, and they knew my, obviously, they were parked in front of my house, they knew the door was open. They all got in their cars, they drove around the circle, and they left. So I emailed the warranty coordinator, um, her name's Cindy, she's the only one that talks to us, which, it's nice that she talks to us, but, you know, George doesn't talk to us anymore. Josh, he wasn't really involved in most of these problems, we've been dealing with George mostly, which is who we wanted to deal with, we really didn't wanna deal with Josh.
All right, uh, even though your warranty is up, when, December?
December, yes.
Right, we'll hold enough money so that, once you submit what needs to be done by your third party, we'll make sure we hold enough and see where it goes. Hopefully, it gets resolved before then.
Now, do we talk to you guys about the outside of the house stuff, or is that for someone else, like our siding or the roof?
House building is out of our jurisdiction.
The actual houses, okay.
Have you, and, and we have a new building inspector, so have you been to him?
We did talk to him, and we, we were told to, you know, tell George about it, and they are sending someone out to look at the ceilings again, but they've sent someone out now, I think, three different times, and nothing's been getting done. It's basically, like I said, we're getting, like, run around in circles.
Can you submit a letter to the building inspector?
Yes.
Or have him respond to you in writing and copy the board?
He did come, um, he did come for a visit to see, cause our siding on our house is, like, melting, and, um, he did come to see that. So now, we, we just told, um, Cindy about the siding on the house, and someone's coming to, they said to prepare it at first, but we were like, how can you repair vinyl siding? So I think someone, I mean, we're not gonna be home, unfortunately, they kinda waited until I was back to work. I told them, and I have emails proving it, that I wanted everything done over the summer. We had a couple months to get the se, uh, the ceilings done and the outside stuff, and they basically wasted my entire summer and did nothing. And now, September's here, and I'm back at work, he works every day, he can't be home. So now, we're gonna have people there when no one's home repairing our siding, and if they do the yard, doing that.
Yeah, they haven't mentioned the yard, so I don't think they plan on doing anything for that.
Well, we gotta fix the lot. So, but if you can get the building inspector, at least to get him to copy the board on what his findings are?
Okay.
Okay, so we can slide that into...
What days is he here, I forgot?
Uh, Josh, the building inspector?
Yeah.
I actually, I don't know his schedule.
Monday and Tuesday, and then Thursday.
You had mentioned before, like, um, coring the, the yard, what is that actually, like, involved, what has to be done at company?
It's a hand tool, just go in there, and it's like a hand tool, you just twist it.
Okay.
And you pull it out, and it shows a sample of the, uh...
That'd be interesting to do.
It has a slice in it, so you can actually see it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Now, does a company have to come out and do that, or?
Any landscaper, I think, might even have a core tool, will it?
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, it's all hand, just twist it in the hand.
Whoever that company was, talk to them.
Now, that's some, something they could probably do, and, and do like a report on to say what...
Right, who's, who's doing the third party?
Um, we had, uh, Scotts look at it.
Oh, Scott, yeah, the one that we contacted?
Yeah.
We contacted, um, Scotts.
Yeah, okay, so have them come out, have them do a sample core?
Okay.
And they can, you know, just give me, uh...
Anyone that does the, well, Walter, anyone that does a coring, they have to be bonded, and they have to be in business, and has a certificate that they know how to do it properly, so make sure that's applicable.
Okay, is there a company that, that, uh, the town uses or anything that does that, that you know of?
The last boring we did was on, uh, White Stone, remember?
Yeah, but that was on the street, though.
That was on the street, but he was, he could do coring anyways, he was certified to do it.
Yeah, I, I don't know if you need to get that elaborate with just a soil sample, but it, you know, I mean, if you plotted out on your plot plan, and he just located on the plan where he took the samples from.
Cause, you know, it's not that involved, but...
Yeah.
If it, if it goes to civil, you might need that, that's what I'm trying to get at.
You, you start going to court, you're gonna have to have something.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're trying to avoid, I mean, we don't, you know, we just bought a brand new house, we really don't wanna end up in court. This builder, he's built many homes, it's not his first home or his first neighborhood, and unfortunately, we've read the reviews, and he does this to a lot of his customers, so, it's like...
While, while you're here, I've been hearing things, what was your total agreement on the landscaping?
Okay.
You, you agreed to just seed it yourself?
Yeah, the, the thing is, we agreed that they were gonna bring in the loom, and they were gonna fix the yard so it was prepared to, to grow grass. And we went to Northeast Nursery, and, and in our contract, it says that we waved just the grass seed, and I have the contract, it says it. So we just waved our grass seed, we went to Northeast Nursery, we bought good grassy that was recommended for the area. Our house has, um, sun and shade on it, so in the morning, it's a lot of sun, then in the afternoon, the front is all shade. So we got a sun and shade mix for the whole, for the front and backyard. We spread it, it started to grow in certain spots, and then that's when we had the pooling develop in the front. And then, after months and months of coming here, George said that he was gonna fix the area that was pooling. He brought in really good loom for that area.
I was there when they brought it.
Yeah, and that, that loom is great, right now, there's grass growing there, it's bright green, it's all full. And then the other areas, he said he would seed them for us. Now, I don't know if he did it or not, but he said that he was gonna seed all the areas that had, um, bald spots in the front and the back. Now, those areas, he seeded with his own seed, and there's no grass there. So the other night, when we were here, and his partner, Josh, said we used the wrong seed, we obviously didn't, because the seed that they put down didn't grow either, so that says a lot.
One, one question more on the amount of loom, I've heard rumors that, was there any agreement on how many inches of loom was to be put?
No.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to nip that in the bud, and find out for sure.
No.
Have you been watering, have you been watering the ground?
Oh, yes, yes, we, we have, how many sprinklers?
I have, uh, eight, eight sprinklers out there.
Yeah, I've seen your sprinklers working, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, we had heard some people agreed to three inches, not the six required.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We, we had heard that, uh, um, some folks had, in their agreement, only three inches of loom versus the six required.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, some people have said that, in their contract, it said, um, like, it said something about screened soil or something like that, not loom.
Cause ours said loom.
But ours said specifically loom right in the contract. And it said, um, thirty feet in disturbed areas, and they didn't put any at all. They didn't put from the house out, there's nothing. They came in, and all they did was just put loom basically to grade it, some of the low spots, they added a little bit, just to, to get it to grade, and that's all they did. And what was out there was basically the fill from the foundation, they just spread it and use that to grade it. And we complained that there was no loom, and it was all big boulders, so they came in with a bobcat, with a rock hound on it, and went through the yard and tried to clean up some of the rocks. That's how they put the loom down, they just went and cleaned up the rocks. And half of the area, they missed, so now, when I mow the lawn, you can see the tops of rocks, and I, um, buried them last time, that, that's what I showed you pictures of, and you could just see, like, the top of a rock like this, and I cleaned around it with the rake, and they ended up being big boulders like this right on top, so nothing's gonna grow there.
This is the plan that we signed, and you guys can look. It says landscaping, loomed, you might need to blow it up, but...
I'm not gonna read that.
Just pension.
You want me to move you? And you can see our initials.
Yeah, maybe I moved them in too much, no?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll find it.
Yeah.
I would've been happy with three inches of loom. At this point.
Much water on it as the guy across the street from you?
No, we, we had a lot of water before they filled in that area where the pond was.
Yeah.
But now, what happens is, instead of the water, uh, sitting there, it doesn't go through, because it's so much clay there, it runs around the side of the house and washes out the side now. And still, on the side where it keeps washing away, we still have no grass, there's not even weeds there, just, it's just bare. And all you can see is there was a layer of rocks that was probably down a couple inches, and it washed away whatever clay was there, and it's just like a layer of rocks now.
Yeah, it's what, what I always have a hard time is, I mean, all the rest of the lots seem to be springing grass left and right. And then, if I go back to when the actual golf, uh, driving fairway was there, uh, I mean, that was as green as green could get to be, the whole thing.
We lose it everywhere.
As to what is happening.
You know, there's so many, um, pages of it.
Yeah, I don't...
Yeah.
It's, uh, I, I've never seen anything like it before, but it just, you can't even breathe, the weeds just sprout out like crazy, and there's no grass.
Well, weeds don't grow before, they'll grow, like, they'll grow before grass grows, but...
Usually, you get some grass, though, we have, like, no grass.
I, I've had particularly hard time this year, if I hadn't been watering it all the time, I just got back from Florida for two weeks, my daughter didn't do anything.
Right.
Boy, lost part of it.
Yeah.
And it was in the park, it was the part that was in the shade.
Right.
But, you know, this has been an extremely hot summer, I can tell you right now.
And I've been home all summer, so I, I get to water it for the day.
You just started getting the dew, the morning dew.
Right.
And that's almost like watering a lawn. And, and I, I've got other spots that are in the sun all day, for the most part, and they're sprouting like crazy.
Wow.
You know, and I'm, no water's going on, it's the dew.
I mean, unfortunately, the, the soil, or the loom, or whatever they wanna call it, they brought in, and I'm not saying that they didn't bring it in, cause you said you saw them bring it in, they, they must've, they did, but what they brought in wasn't enough, or it wasn't good quality.
Well, we saw it two lots, the last two lots were being...
Oh, they brought in a lot for the last two.
Oh, the last two, we were, we said, why can't you do that for us? Ours was done, you know, a year, about a year before that, and I mean, ours, we had those pictures, we showed you about those pieces of metal, and we had all kinds of golf balls in there, and there's no way that they would've got loom from a place with all that stuff in it. I understand that they take a bunch of dirt out, I don't know if they reuse that, if they just screened certain parts of it, and then just dumped it all back in, calling it loom, maybe?
I know the...
But I mean, we had, we had a whole bucket full of golf balls, and we have rocks on the first layer. I mean, we know it was a golf course before, so, obviously, you know, they didn't bring in whatever it is, six inches, three inches, of good loom. The loom that's in our front yard, in that little patch that was ponding, they did not bring that in for all of our yard, because we'd have grass.
Yep, that's what it looks like, okay.
Well, get, get, get the estimate, you know, and, and everything, and...
We're just getting, you know, we're getting worried, we're just asking for your help, because we're kind of in over our heads now with them, with our actual structure of the house, like the house stuff inside, so we're just trying to get the outside taken care of, so we can move on and focus on the inside before December comes.
Okay, so you can get that to us soon?
Yeah.
Yeah, this will...
Before next meeting?
Yes.
Definitely.
Okay. Email it around, get the emails.
Yeah, I have your email.
Okay, so that way, we'll get it beforehand.
Right.
Uh, include it on the building inspector, too.
Okay.
So he has a copy, and then he'll copy us, all right, his finding.
Usually, when they aerate, they put sand in it, too, and that helps dilute the clay that's there and stuff, and makes it more susceptible for the water to drain and everything else.
Right.
But yes, get those to us, and don't worry about the, um, date of December, your warranty will still hold as far as the money we hold, you know?
Okay, great.
And I think what, didn't the building inspector tell us he was here two days, eight hours, and one, one day, four hours?
You've, you've met him already?
Yes, yeah.
So, so you know his name?
Twenty hours.
Um, I know, I think it's Tuesday or Wednesday nights he's here.
Just the extension number, which is two oh nine, when you call the, uh, town number, which they didn't put on here, but... Yeah.
Five five six seventy-two?
Yeah.
All right.
All right, that's it, so we'll see you, um...
On the fifteenth.
Fifteenth, okay. What time does it start, does it always start at, is it seven?
No, seven thirty is opening mail and sign offs, the official meeting is seven forty-five.
Oh, okay.
And that's when we do the structure of it.
Okay.
So depending on where he is on that. And I haven't re, redid it since he canceled tonight. So I would assume, if I...
Now, are they both gonna be here? George will be here?
George is supposed to be here, yes. Thought I had the agenda for the first, but... Nope.
Guys, all set?
Oh, here it is. Uh, let's see, on that day, we got the hearing on SD Way, scheduled the, after opening mail, and then Chestedon, uh, if the MOD is ready, so I would say after eight.
Well, when, we get SD Way hearing?
That's on the fifteenth, yes, it's being advertised as we speak.
And he was here on this one first, and he rolled in?
Huh?
He was supposed to be here tonight.
No, not SD Way.
No, uh, Fairway, Golden Fairways.
This is for the fifteenth.
Yeah, this is two weeks from now.
Right, right, so, yeah, he didn't wanna be here tonight, so he's gonna come on the fifteenth.
Yes, it was always scheduled for the fifteenth for SD Way.
Okay, and what about?
For the hearing.
Fairway.
He asked to be continued today to the fifteenth on Fairway.
So that comes first.
I haven't put that on the agenda, cause I did this agenda a week ago.
Right, so we'll slide Fairway ahead of SD, because it's...
This has already been on TV, so you don't wanna change the structure.
It's, uh, more than two weeks before the meeting.
There might be other people on the hearing coming in, planning to be here, and why would you make them wait, too?
Because, uh, the horse is on the wrong side of the cart, would be the way I would look at that. If you continue the meeting tonight to roll into there, then we pick up where we left off on the continuation, everyone's gonna be here anyway, and it's the same group, with the exception of some of the residents.
Cause it was just listed as paperwork.
Well, he, he made it more.
It wasn't, it wasn't a hearing.
So...
You're just convoluting the thing, you know what, why don't we just leave it where it is, and I'll add that to it?
Yeah, add it, add it right in there, we'll just pick that one up, so... So, so he'll be here from eight o'clock on, I guess.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you for enlightening us, that's even more information than I knew about, so...
Yeah, well, that's the thing, I mean, I know he talks to you a lot alone, and he tells you what he wants you to know.
I don't hear...
Well, I mean, what we've gone through, we've gone through two lots yourselves, the guy across the street, and then, the only other ones we got involved in really was the two new ones that are being finished up, only because he wanted us to see what he was doing.
How good he did on those.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so we did observe all of that.
I watched him, I watched him dumping truckload, after truckload of loom in there, I watched him, and they had, Gibbs Construction just kept backing the truck in, and they had about ten or twelve piles of loom in there, and on our house, they didn't bring any loads of loom in, they brought in ten yards for the front.
And they shared it with our neighbor.
On the second time they loomed you, though, I was there when he brought in the, um, triaxial of loom and dumped it in the front.
Yes, but he spread it.
Then I took pictures of him doing the front, and also the side, and the back, I got pictures of those. So he did, Grant, I gotta admit that the screening process was the worst I ever seen in my life.
Mm-hmm.
When they first did yours.
Oh, absolutely, because there wasn't screen, screens.
That was bad screening.
I know that time, you were there for it, they did bring a triaxial in, but that was for the whole, the whole yard, they spread that, one truck, you know?
We'll get rolling for that.
Doesn't, that's pretty, pretty thin spread, it was like less than, it was probably about an inch for the whole yard.
And we didn't know at the time, we complimented him on how nice it looked, because it did look nice, it was very thin, thinly spread, but it looked good.
Till it rained.
Until it rained. Because there was not even an inch down, and that was him doing us a favor, he said, by spreading that.
Okay, we'll get the picture.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
See you in a couple weeks.
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks.
Gentlemen, that completes the agenda.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, let's get Bob back in.
Where's Bob?
In the next room there.
Sleeping.
I love to stand while I'm with you, um, have a nice night.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so when we see what their estimate is for that, and also the wall, then we'll just hold that much back.
Yeah, I think that's an easy fix.
But we're not gonna be going crazy.
Yeah, that's what it takes to fix.
I'm not, not getting into, I know, the house building, that's...
Yeah, that's the building inspector, yep. Okay.
And he went on?
I don't know.
He got in the office?
I didn't see him, I had to look again, I put my whole head in there, not in the
Okay.
Okay.
Did you do this?
No, it's all right, just a motion to adjourn, so...
All right.
Just real. You slide it?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
Eight forty.
So the vote unanimous, so the meeting adjourned for September first, twenty fifteen, thank you for watching at home, good night.